I'll call the meeting to order at 6:30. And I entertain a motion to accept the agenda as may be approved.
So moved.
Do you know of any reason to move something around? Okay. In favor of accepting the agenda as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
And I entertain a motion for the minutes of August 20th as may be amended. I didn't have anything on my...
Me neither.
Okay. I thought I heard the door open, I was gonna wait. Okay, all in favor of the minutes of August 20th, please say aye.
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 Hello?
Wow. You don't get normal haircuts, do you? Wait till it's like seven inches long and then have it cut down to nubs.
Where we at?
We're just doing minutes, so I entertain a motion to accept the minutes of...
August 20th?
We did the 20th.
28th?
I don't have the 20th. I looked at them online.
28th business, they look different.
Oh, they're different, okay.
They're just because they were actually prepared by the planning commission.
Oh, this was the one that...
Because it was the joint meeting.
Okay. So the minute of the August 28th, 2019, as may be amended.
So moved.
Okay. This was the discussion of the roadway?
Correct. It was more of the planning commission, so they put down what they wanted to put in. So I'm good with it.
As I was saying, I read it online, I just didn't... All in favor of the minutes of August 28th, please say aye.
Aye. I'll make a motion to approve September 3rd.
Again, I don't...
I'm good with it.
Me too.
All in favor of the minutes of September 3rd, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any select board concerns?
I have one.
Yep.
I noticed, like, we're still, some of the golf carts are still missing divot and pear tubes.
They are.
Yeah.
Okay.
There's a number of them. I still don't have them, so... I don't know the exact number, but I think there's some...
Well, I think we talked to David and say how many are missing and John Brown's supposed to be here shortly, and we just let him know what's what, that those things are supposed to be here. And I think you're right, one of the reasons I was seeing so many divots out there is because they hadn't delivered the sand, so people were out there without any sand for half of the summer.
Yeah.
And they're better now. I don't, I don't have anything...
I don't have a concern, but I have, I'd like, since the beaver people aren't here, I would like at least a, you know, since we're on TV and it's whatever, can you give us an update of, you know, folks on social media saying they have the town red-handed doing things illegally? So I'm asking the town manager to give us an update on the beavers on River Road.
Yeah, we had a situation, actually a couple situations this past summer related to, like, Archie Baker Road topped twice during storms. We didn't have enough flow available, enough free board available under the bridge to take the flows, and it did top the road. And in large part, this is caused by several beaver dams. There's one on either side of Archie Baker Road, and there's also one behind the rec fields. The town employed a beaver trapper to try and reduce the number of beavers because at some point, when the storms were actually happening and we would have liked to have taken the beaver downstream, we could not get to them. We actually did get a contractor out to try and find if we could do it. We then waited till the water receded, started the trapping, and opened up the dam to try and make sure we had enough flow available for future storms and for next year. This is a practice that has gone on for more than 30 years in the town of Killington, and the fact that this is the first time it's been brought up means I think we're doing a good job of managing the beavers. We only remove beaver dams where they're related to creating flow for loss of property and loss of town facilities. And this is in compliance with the state regulations. And actually, because of the complaints, we did have a visit from the A&R compliance officer on Friday. We went through the process that we've undertaken, and he's came with, well, property and town facilities take priority over all of these functions in the town, has the right to remove beaver dams in that situation, and that, given that we've been doing this for the length of time we have, to keep that process going and keep it up because we are managing them correctly.
Okay, and then the last thing is, is that the town is taking a position to maintain what we have, and that's all?
That's correct.
All right, we're not destroying anything above.
No, we take...
Now, is it, I've heard that this person who's not here, who is making the complaints online, was actually trying to rebuild the beaver dams?
I've heard that rumor, I have not been out there to look at that, but the issue will be that, as, one of the things that we have to do is do the trapping and break some of the dam loose to begin with before the end of the season, and when we get into the October, November timeframe and end of November, when the ground freezes a little bit, we will be able to get in and do the formal removal of those particular dams, and hopefully the beavers will build them in another location, not the same one. The goal is to not have them rebuilt in a place that's going to cause additional problems.
Okay, and then my last question on it is, is that I've also heard that this person has been harassing the people that we've hired on to try to scare them off?
That is correct, and they had pulled out from doing the work, but my understanding is that they're reconsidering it now, and we also have another beaver trapper who had already planned to do some in October, so we'll be managing the process.
Okay, so we understand by the state of Vermont A&R that what we are doing is legal.
Correct.
We have every right to do it.
Yes.
And we also understand that we have a person that's harassing people doing it for us to try to scare them off, and we have a police department, and we, we know who this person is, can we please have our police department visit this person? And, you know, harassment should not, you know, this is just like, this is a subcontractor, it's like an employee of ours, and we don't want our people to be harassed.
And we can look at that, they're not a resident of Killington, so it would have to be when they're here in that process. I don't know if we can go visit them, but we can talk about that later.
Okay, and that's what I would like us to see.
Okay. Okay. What is the particular area of question? Do you know where Archie Baker Road is? It's right on River Road. It was downstream from it, and the water was backing up because of the dam over the bridge that goes to the houses on the back, on the end of Archie Baker Road.
Next, and what was that hiding?
Oh, it was over the bridge.
It was over the bridge during a couple storms.
And it was into someone's backyard and almost, I don't know if it was flooding their house, but I believe it was...
What, my understanding, it was within a foot.
It was within the house.
We just got to within a foot of getting in the house.
It doesn't take long if they're used to it.
Right.
I've been doing, I've been a trapper here for more than 12 years, I usually stick to the stuff that's easy to get to from the road, but I bought a canoe this year because other people have been trapping in the area and getting the stuff that's close to the road. So my plan was to do from the J-hook here down past Good Rose, but be in the middle of the swamp, places where I've never been able to go on foot before, so...
So are you a licensed trapper?
Oh, yeah.
We appreciate your assistance.
I got bit out of shape last year, I think, when people were being brought in from out of town.
Actually, I wasn't aware that you did it locally.
That's what I'm saying, you two should meet because...
You should come talk to me, and we'll talk about that.
We hire on...
I think we did, and I...
You did?
Yeah, I respectfully declined to trap all of them, but I would keep the numbers down.
Right, we have to, we just, when we're gonna have to move a dam, we have to collect all of them, because otherwise they just rebuild it in the same spot.
Yeah.
So you gotta do, like, there's a couple of dams we have to clean up.
You can fill every last one of them from here to Sky Base, and then chopper in some from Canada, and then you're gonna put the dams in the same places because it makes sense for them.
Well, I, we're gonna just try to slow it down, and the reality is, is most of the dams take four or five years before they get bad enough that we gotta do something with them.
If you take one per colony, you pretty much hold them as they are. If you take two or three per colony, you put them in a gradual decline. If you take too many, they can't maintain the dams that exist because they don't have enough working hours. And as far as anything any human can do to help them, it's a fool's arse, nothing you can do to help them make a dam. They'll do what you do, and I know sometimes you guys go in with the back hose, but that has other devastating effects to other wildlife as well. Water drops too far, you expose the entrances to the lodges, and then foxes, fishers, bobcats, eagle right in there and kill them all, which may be what you want. It also drops the water level down so low that the plants that are expecting their roots to stay below the level of the water are exposed, and when the frost comes, it kills the plants. And then you have what we had down here a few years ago, which was a lot of, smelled like low tide, and it lost her for a year or two, and all the plants were black. I don't know if any of you remember that, about three, four, five years ago, but if you go too hard at it, you have nothing.
No, we just, we have two spots that are a problem. The whole back of the rec facility is flooding, and Archie Baker Road. Those are the two bad spots right now.
Okay, well, the traffic season opens in November.
Yep.
I consider that problem solved.
Okay.
All right, and we're following, we're following the A&R rules, that's all.
Okay, well, I have...
Yeah, so...
Okay. Thank you. Anything else, select board? Citizen input. Does anyone here have something that's not already on the agenda?
I was just curious about, I've been to a couple of planning commission meetings, and I haven't really seen anything about any kind of regulation or Airbnb come in front of them again. At a big meeting, everybody got excited, and now what are they doing? So I'm sure they have to answer to somebody somewhere.
Basically, the planning commission sent their recommendations to the attorney the first week or two of August, and we should have them shortly.
When is the case that we're having that's...
Hasn't, hasn't gone to court, they just did, we just got discovery questions last week or two, so we responded to those. But, yeah, we're, that's progressing slowly, but I would expect in October, we'd be having the meetings about that.
Medical marijuana dispensary orders.
Chuck, do you want to explain the changes?
The only revision we've made is, you know, we took out in the title the public consumption because that's just being handled the same way we do with alcohol and cigarettes, and we modified the penalty to the maximum penalty allowed by law, which is this $800 for a full penalty, and he said, "Put a waiver penalty in there just because it meets statutory requirements," and he said, "Put it at 750." So that's what we've changed. So basically, right now, it's just an ordinance to prohibit medical marijuana dispensaries in Killington.
Make a motion to approve the ordinance.
Further discussion?
I think we knocked this thing down quite a bit.
We've talked at three meetings, yeah. Okay. I'm good with the changes that have been made to it. So all those in favor of adopting the ordinance for regulation of medical marijuana dispensaries, please say aye.
Aye. You guys can sign that one.
Is this the one you want to sign?
Well, they're all, they're all the same, so you can pick one.
Okay. I'll show you when you press it over.
Is this the penalty for trying to open an illegal business?
Yes, that's it, it's overland, they don't...
And thus, as a spy, does it can go? Too bad. Not taking one of them.
They're not calling in for the golf course tonight, right?
No, they're, actually, John Brown is planning to be at the October feast first meeting, and we'll be talking about the preliminary discussions about budget, things of that nature.
I think that's for the crease received and recorded.
That's one of our items underneath seven, to approve a travel request.
Correct. He's coming up with, I think it was three people, one is a replacement for Justin.
Correct.
And he also wants to talk about some changes for next year, one of them being the fact that Peter's announced his retirement as superintendent.
Right, and start the budget process for that.
That's right. We have the travel part in our contract, does their request meet the contract?
Yeah, basically, they're gonna do the drive the same way we did in the past, and what I'm actually gonna be doing, oh, probably this, the rest of this week, I'm gonna try and find somebody who may want to donate the hotel space and maybe one meal or something, and see if we can't get this a little bit cheaper.
Okay. So it's within the contract, so we don't really need...
It's within the contract, and it's within the same price of last year, so...
Yeah. So we're okay there. I gotta take this one phone call, and I'll be right back in. Do we want to more or less table financials until John is here to...
Well, no, this is, this is just end of August financials, and I could just give an update. Well, first of all, just so you know, I sent, we had a, I had sent a preliminary off to John, and there was some stuff missing as far as revenue, but given where we are right now as of period eight, we could talk about any of the details you'd like. Last year at this time, we had $686,000 in total revenue. This year, we have $716,000, so we're about $30,000 better than last year at the same time, and that's with a very poor month of June. As you recall, we were somewhere in the $650,000, $60,000 short in June, so we've caught up.
Well, we had no May.
Right.
June was just starting to catch up.
Yeah, so, and then on top of that, we have expenses that are down from $737,000 to $619,000. Now, the caveat to the $619,000 is when Justin left, when Justin left, they, there was a delay with getting some of the invoices out for Brown, so when you look at the 700 and, the $619,000 in expenses, it's actually $61,000 higher that will show up the next time, which makes it $670,000, so we're still $47,000 less in expenses than last year, plus the 30 in the positive, which puts us to a net gain of about $87,000, because we had, this time last year, you'll notice, we were showing a $51,000 negative at this point. We're showing a $97,000 positive, but you subtract the 61, that's the correction, and we're at $36,000 to the positive, so that's the 87. So we went from $51,000 negative to $36,000 positive at this same time of the year.
Okay, and when we sold the older golf carts, we agreed to do the roof on the building?
Yes.
Is that money aside?
Yes.
Okay.
So we, and we've been just waiting, I've been waiting just from a cash perspective to make sure we're okay, and we may hold it and actually do it as soon as the spring breaks, but waiting to see, just make sure we have the cash, because we do have to pay the $250,000 back. And when, and when we go to, again, if we want to skip to the treasurer's report real quick, we could just look at the golf portion of it. Treasurer's report at this time shows a balance in the pro shop of $269,000, and a balance of $62,000 in the, in the pro shop, and then we have the $81,000 that's the balance, it's part of the restricted funds, which is our capital expenses, which we've spent on making some of the cart payments, and we bought the 30-something thousand dollars worth of mowers to this point. It's actually, I think, yeah, they're like 47, I think, is what we've spent. So I think we're headed in the right direction. We do have a couple of issues. We're gonna have to replace the dishwasher, it's gonna cost us like $4,000, the high heat when failed the health inspection, so we're getting a new one. And we still have the issue of, we don't have an airator to pull behind, and we're short of ball washer, so there's a few things that are still out there that we're gonna have to look at a plan for, so... But I think in general, when you look at the golf account, we still show the $81,000 in restricted funds, which will cover the roof and the other items we had planned to.
How old is that dishwasher machine, do we know?
I don't know, it's old enough, it's, I don't know when it was replaced last.
I just ask because, you know, I leased my dishwasher from Cisco.
Did you?
Which is Eagle Labs. I was paying $72 a month for it.
Ooh, well, we haven't done the replacement yet, I will look into that.
I paid $72 a month, and it's not my dishwasher, it's theirs.
Yeah.
If something breaks, they have to come in and they fix it.
Worth, well, we'll be looking at that tomorrow. It's good to know.
Okay, instead of laying out four grand right away.
Anything else on the financials?
No, that's all I have for golf.
You don't need a motion to accept it, right?
No.
No, they're just presented. I don't think we have to...
I mean, the only thing, when we get done with the treasurer, when we get done with the treasurer's report, we'll accept that.
So now there's a travel request, I'll make a motion to approve the travel request, and then you can tell us what it's all about.
The Brown Golf is gonna do their annual visit this fall to go over how the year went, things that we might want to look at changing next year as they go into preparation for the budget. One of the things that we're, look, one of the things that we have to address is, and I don't know if we've announced at a select board meeting, but the golf course will be moving to the same fiscal year as the town, so we will then have a, one, only have to do one audit per year. It will also mean we won't get an adverse opinion by having two different sets of books that don't necessarily end the same time. So it will be operating the same as the golf, as the town, it'll operate from a legal and accounting perspective as a department of the, of the town, but it will still be maintained separately in the books. We will still have a separate whole accounting system, the whole thing, and they will still have their own separate accounts, but from the auditor's perspective, it will then be one big package, which was a goal.
We're going back about seven years ago.
Correct.
In his email, he talked about more or less evaluating the marketing this year and how it did, and looking at whether he wants to stay with it, or increase it, or change it in some way. So that, that was just part of his email about his, his visit in October.
So, and the cost for it?
The cost, I don't have it with me, but it was like right around $1,100 when we did it before.
I have a motion on the floor to approve it, the travel request.
All those in favor of approving the travel request, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Town financials have nothing really new and exciting to report. We are, we all look at the, at the revenues from taxes, you'll notice those numbers are up, but they're up because we also had the increase this past year. By percentage, we are within like $25,000 of having the same level of collection that we did last year, so we're doing fine with a, with a greater amount billed, so I don't see any, any major concerns at this point. We'll be affected potentially as we go on October 8th, there's several properties that are in, going up for tax sale. We've had one of them already pay their amount, and we have three or four others looking at the possibility of trying to head that off, so hopefully we'll have less to, to actually go through with the sale. But right now, things are looking good, we, you know, it's, we're only two months into the year, so by expense-wise, everything seems to be tracking normally. I don't see anything that's been out of the ordinary. And our options taxed, when we only budgeted $36,000, was 42, so everything's just slightly better than, than it's been, but, you know, from an expense perspective, it's all tracking very straightforward.
The only question, and I don't know where it is on here, but last year, we had the conversation, how the golf course sits on a piece of land over in Mendon, that we pay the taxes for that over there, and then over in the Pyco or Robinwood area, we have a deal that we plow some of their roads there.
You're owed $4,000.
And they're spo, and they haven't been paying us for a few...
We missed, we missed last year, and I gotta find out why, so I gotta follow up with them.
I would suggest that before we make any other payments on the taxes, that we apply the money that they owe us.
That's, that's great.
Roger.
Yeah, I'm sorry to go backwards.
No.
So you said the golf course is gonna switch their fiscal calendar, line up with the town fiscal calendar? No, we did that, I can go with those, about a year worth of numbers that had to be solid, let's say.
Right.
Is that gonna create that same...
No.
No? That's all I have.
I mean, because the reality is, the nice, the nice part about it is, is all we have to do is take apart the month. The only time we'll have it is the very first time, and we'll just, we'll have to do the manual adjustment to start at July 1, because the first six months will track identical, then we're gonna go back to zero, which we weren't before, so the only, one of the limitations of our accounting software is everything's year-to-date, so when you get through period seven, it includes seven months, and we're gonna have to break that one out.
So this will start in 2020?
This will start in 2020, July 1, 2020.
Okay, so that's good, because then there's that, there really is no activity.
Right. Yeah.
Well, it's gonna be more like the recreation budget.
Yeah.
Because we have to look back, and like, even though, you know, there's July, they have money, they have money coming in in April, April, May, and June.
You'll, you'll see that, like, when...
It's gonna close off at that point, at the end of June, and then we're gonna reopen another one, so...
And basically, since the first six months is the minimal part of our revenue, when you look at the next year, July 1 to June 30, you'll be able to match it, year, like, the calendar, yeah, it'll be pretty close, it's just that first six months will almost have no effect.
Same amount of expenditures that we have in the town side.
Right.
So it should be a lot.
I mean, the golf course really comes down to when we start again this year, August, September, and two weeks in October.
That's where, that's where it all ends. You hope, you, you hope you get...
Somewhere in July, it starts turning positive, and then August and September and October adds to it. Except for like last year, when we had rain every single...
Well, they had no September, and October was snow.
Right.
Yeah, the expenses are higher in May and June because they're putting everything together after the winter.
Right.
And our income is down because we don't have a lot of people here yet.
Right, hiring people on, so... It might take a year, but it's not gonna, it's not gonna be like what the other whole budget was. Yeah, no, not the whole.
Sorry to go back.
That's okay.
And just to go to the treasurer's report, right now, we're showing a balance of $6 million, of which $2 million of it is restricted funds, so we have a $4 million balance, we're doing, we're tracking right where we should be from a cash perspective. Doesn't show in this report, but the first week of September, we got the bond anticipation notes for the public safety building and the road process, so we, when we look at the next treasurer's report, it'll be $4.5 million bigger. But we've spent, but we'll have spent all of the money for the highway upgrades by the end of September, and as we stand right now, a little good news for the day, we're at $861,000, we just paid the 700, or the $600 and something thousand dollar paving price, so we are down to waiting for the rest of the stone bill, so we're gonna come in maybe 10% under budget.
So when is the next payment due to the school? Because it's not, we have not been billed yet for the school, that's why there's nothing in there.
December 1st. I think it's December 1st.
So we'll get a bill for that, and that's around 3.5?
Yeah, something million, yeah, but we get the other payment in before that.
Right.
Yeah.
Do you, do you expect us, I think you said the last meeting, no, but do you expect us to have to borrow a short-term note to cover that this budget, or is that the following year?
No, we shouldn't.
So when we come into the December payment...
We should not need the borrow money.
Okay.
Given where we are right now, because we're gonna do, we're gonna do the bond application in December, in that bond application will be the $558,000 for the FEMA bridges, and when we receive that money, we will be at a place where come May, barring a negative FEMA report, we will not have to borrow any money for the, get through the summer, so we will accomplish that this year. And speaking of FEMA, I did send an email to the state FEMA representatives, and they said they have been in, trying to contact Boston, and they've heard nothing, so we just have no idea.
Just leave them alone and let them forget us.
Well, we're, we're, we're kind of in that mode right now, we hope we get forgotten, but, you know, we'll see how that goes, but right now, we have not had, there still hasn't been an official response.
So where you're, it doesn't get completely forgotten.
No.
It comes back nine months later.
Yeah, somewhere, it's, well, my hope is, is that, you know, and this is just the B... Yeah, somewhere, it, it's, well, my hope is, is that, you know, and this is just being an optimist, my hope is, is that they're looking at it as they were sent it back by Washington saying, you're not gonna bill them and figure out how to make this work. That's my hope. But I, I'm not optimistic. I'm, I'm optimistic in that that's what I hope it happens, but I'm not optimistic it will be successful.
So when we say we don't plan on borrowing any short-term tax anticipation note, it really does depend, though, on the FEMA.
Right, but we, we still will have made the progress, um, of at least three-hundred thousand, so we, again, we would go from six-hundred to three-hundred.
I just don't want people coming back to us and saying, we said that we wouldn't.
No, I, the, the possibility still exists that, that we would have to, to borrow that money. And yeah, there's a couple other possibilities, because if we, if we are not uh, successful, one of the things I've talked to the state and they're not opposed to it this time, is the possibility of getting an after-the-fact grant, so, you know, for a structures grant, because I, we would have received the structures grant had FEMA not been paying it. So if, if we're able to be successful with that, we could pick up a hundred-and-seventy-five of the two sixty.
Okay.
So we're, there's a lot of things, we're just trying to keep going.
Thank you. And, yeah, and last year, we talked about reducing that million dollars and we're down considerably.
Yeah.
And it does depend on what FEMA says.
Right.
Beyond that, it depends on whether we can be successful with the state. But we're going in the right direction in terms of cutting down on borrowing that short-term money.
And the last thing on the treasurer's report on page two, underneath the golf course, number two. Since we're going into, um, the budget season, are we, have any idea what we're doing with that?
At this time, the plan was, well, first of all, I'm waiting to see if there's any auditor's adjustment to it. There was an issue a year ago when the golf course paid a thirty-five-thousand-dollar loan payment that the town didn't reimburse. And that may reduce that number from two-eighty-six by thirty-five thousand. I'm waiting to hear if that's the case. And on top of that, uh, the only thing that the auditor mentioned that, that they recommend, which is something we were already talking about, was coming up with a, a separate capital fund for the golf course to be able to start taking care of where we are. You know, but they, they did not state that we need to do anything with that money.
If we had talked about last year.
I'm setting up their own fund.
Their own fund, but also, you know, are they gonna ever be able to pay that back and forgive it or whatever, so.
They're, yeah, they're not gonna be able to pay it back.
But we didn't have, but we didn't have, we weren't sure if we had the right number last year.
This, this was the right number as of last year. We're waiting to see if there's any adjustment to it.
So I'm just giving a heads, because we're gonna start doing budget and at some point there, you know, this is money before this board was on that was loaned.
Yeah.
Any of the money that we've loaned has, was paid back last year and will be paid back again.
That's correct.
So I wanna take care of this other thing at some point here instead of just holding it out.
Well, part of that will be how we address, when we make them under the same umbrella, it becomes a simpler process to-
It's a general fund item.
Yes, it becomes a general fund item, so then we can figure out how we wanna deal with that, but right now, I would say we're gonna go another year carrying it and we'll make a decision then.
So the motion on the floor to approve the treasurer's report?
Further? In favor of accepting the treasurer's report as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Budget review.
Well, basically, um, as we did last year, we started with the first section of the, of the budget um, and trying to do all the ones that are pretty innocuous, that don't, aren't very big and we'll just try to get, get the process done. There was, you know, the select board section, um, is up two percent just because we had to increase a little bit for the recording secretary. Um, based on actuals. Um, other than that, um, everything stays about flat. Um, managing municipality, uh, it's up like six-hundred dollars. Um, no real changes, just, and, and in this, for this preliminary budget, it's been an assumed, because we've done it every year, a two percent, uh, cost of living increase, but that's just for, for placeholder right now, so we had something to, to look at. Uh, meetings and elections is up just a little bit because of the actuals last year for what they've been running. Treasurer is, basically, the continuing education went from two-hundred to four-hundred dollars. So there's a net increase of like seven-hundred dollars in that entire budget. Bookkeeping and secretarial, it's about eleven-hundred and that is primarily because the, little bit more overtime than we had anticipated and then the two percent COLA, and we added sixty dollars in there for, for mileage. Um, so it's up slightly. Uh, auditing and, and then the accounting is gonna be flat. The listing, um, based on actuals with the number of BCA hearings and things of that nature and amount of, uh, actual, uh, property transfers, sorry, I'm- I need somebody to, I need somebody to run this part of it, right? When we go to listing, you'll notice that their budget for salaries is up twenty-three percent. Uh, we had budgeted twenty-one thousand. This past year's actuals was twenty-three-seven and his estimate is the twenty-five-eight. We can look at that. I mean, the total increase of the budget is fifty-three-hundred dollars. Um, but it is a, is one place that had a, from a percentage perspective, a significant increase, but we will look at that further. That's one of the items I think we keep as a placeholder to look at actuals. Town clerk is basically, um, a little, there was a five-hundred-dollar ad for education. And that's because a conference that Lucretia didn't go to last year that she does wanna go to next year, um, that would cover that expense. BCA salaries are flat. Workman's comp and property casualty insurance is a estimated one percent increase right now, and that's based on where we are sitting today. You know, we, we still won't have those numbers till probably closer to December, the actual new ones, but right now, we're trying to estimate where we are. With that, a lot of the workman's comp has come down and that's primarily because we no longer have the golf course employees, so we have less staff salary, so we're getting charged a little less.
So how does that work? The first year, we really, all the employees went over to Brown Golf, okay? Now, even though there's part-time workers, you're still paying workers' comp on part-time workers?
Yes, but we're, but we're paying-
We're reimbursing.
We're, they're, we're paying it through them now.
Right, so.
And it's whatever their rate is for their unemployment.
Their rate was low because it was a new
Right.
group.
Right.
How is that tracking is what I'm getting at.
Oh, right now, it doesn't, it appears to be fairly flat. I mean, so far, I haven't seen it be a significant increase, but I, I don't, I think we're still pretty new into the, into the program to see any real.
And then the same thing under unemployment, because it was basically a new company? I don't know what line item unemployment is.
Unemployment's down in the bottom. It's in the benefit section.
Okay.
Which is not in this, which is not in this group.
When all the employees went to Brown, if you start a new company, you start off at the lowest rate, but as you start each year, then it starts coming up.
Yeah.
So are we seeing much of an increase on that? We already have a year over there. We should've got something that showed us for them. I mean, you don't have to have it right now.
No, I mean, it, that's just, it's in a, that's actually one of the lower, the, further down the budget items, so I wasn't prepared to talk about that one today.
So I, when we get to that down the road, you know, just keep-
Compared to how we're doing.
Track, track that to see how it's going.
Okay. Um, planning and zoning, uh, basically, he's showing, uh, thirty percent decrease, which most of it is in the, uh... Well, we don't have a planning, we don't have a planning grant expense assumed this year at this time, so, um, that's why that's down to three thousand dollars. Town planner and zoning, we're still carrying the full-time budget. When we talk about what we're doing right now, I think three days a week, for the most part, is treading water. I think we're with all the things that are coming down the road and, and I know, uh, Preston sent an email to everybody talking about what, that he sees this in, over the next year or two, really requiring a full-time position again, so I wanna keep that in the budget. Um, so if we wanna make that transition at some point, like if we start rewriting zoning regs, I mean, zoning amendment's one thing, but we do wanna apply for a grant to get the planning commission the money to start rewriting the, the zoning as a whole, you know, get a, a complete update. And, and then we have the, the master plan for Killington Road and there's a nu, number of things that are gonna be going on that will start to, to, uh, have an effect on the amount of time that has to be spent in the planning side, so I think for the time being, I think leaving that in the budget would be wise.
So underneath the planner and zoning, for the budget going forward for two thousand twenty-one, underneath legal services, with what we're planning on going through of, um, one, what are we spending on this one case?
Well, yeah, the one case, and, and that's one that I, I, I just left it flat for the time being, because I wanna see when it's gonna go to trial and when that's gonna affect things, when I, I'll know better in, in a month or so. Um, and then it may be that we have to boost that number.
Okay, and then two, where we're looking to put in, like what Roger had asked underneath citizens input, where are we at with this trying to enforce? What laws are already out there that just, you know?
Oh, you're talking about the, the Airbnb?
Two per bedroom, three per bedroom, whatever it is.
Right.
We're not saying it's two per bedroom.
I understand that. I'm just saying, whatever, no, and, and the reality is, if we are going to undertake that process, which, again, if we're bringing that, that process to the select board and the planning commission again in October, we will, and, and depending on whether or not we're gonna bring in a company to do, you know, the, the electronic man, management, and then we're gonna have to do the registration program, that will have to be considered in that as well. And that will affect, um, to some degree, the legal part, but that will actually probably trigger the full-time position almost automatically.
Right, but it also would be bringing in revenue to cover some of it. I don't know where you two stand with it, but I mean, part of the problem in the town of Killington is, is that, you know, we have rules and regulations, but we just don't have anyone to enforce them. And then also, um, by not enforcing them, you know, there are people out there that have a three-bedroom house and they changed it to a six-bedroom house and nobody knows about it unless you see it up for advertisement. And, and no one thinks there's anything wrong with doing that, but, you know, we are on limited amount of water. We do not have a public water system.
Right.
And we're on septic and water is getting terrible in this area. So we need to, you know, this is not going after someone's business. This is, this is trying to protect the community as a whole. For the resources that we have. And, um, I, I for one see that, I understand it's not in place for this winter, but I've been telling people that are, you know, calling me up and like, what are you doing? What are you doing? Like, I'm basically saying, there should be something in place by the following year, by the following winter season.
My, my feeling is, is if, if we're gonna move in, and this is an apples-to-apples comparison, if we're gonna move towards the registration program and whether, you know, and we're gonna, let's assume we're gonna hire, uh, one of those companies and we're gonna spend sixty thousand dollars on that, but we're also gonna have X amount of dollars in revenue to offset it. You know, that becomes a self-funding program to, to some degree, cause I don't think we would do it unless it's gonna at least pay for itself. Um, so this is to say, what are we doing compared to last year, and then when we add that, we would add those expense items, because if we're gonna hire that, a company, we're gonna put in a contracted services line item here and say it's gonna cost X amount of dollars um, to make that plan, so I, we would make sure that that's all part of it.
And I guess where I'm coming from is, is that, like, when you said, we're not gonna do it unless it covers itself, I'm sitting here as a select person saying-
We need to do it anyway.
We need to do it.
Right.
And you need to get it so it covers itself.
That's what I was getting at.
Okay? And we need to do it.
Well, I agree, I agree with you.
We're not making our decision on saying, well, we, if we charge them twenty dollars or whatever, it's not gonna cover it.
Right.
We need to do it and it needs to be covered.
That's correct. And I, and I agree with that. I just, we don't know what it's gonna look like at this moment, so it's a little premature for this part of the discussion. Uh, my hope is by October fifteenth, that we've reviewed the preliminary budget from comparing what we were doing last year operations-wise to this year, to the proposed year's operations. And then we're gonna be look, and then from then on, if we've covered most of that, we'll be looking at the new programs, looking at actuals for golf and looking at some of these others, and, and then looking at where capital is gonna fall and, and then being able to put it to a, an actual tax rate that makes sense.
So I know we're just doing the budget here and we're going through it quickly, but what I would really like to do is that we want, give plenty enough notice that we want that one of our agendas in the next, you know, two or three months, is going to be a discussion here by this board about actually us moving forward or not moving forward with a vote of implementing this type of registration. An ordinance or whatever you wanna call it.
Yeah, my hope is that we have, we have the, the document back from our attorney before the October first meeting. We could have a preliminary discussion and then put it on the agenda as a hearing on the, on the fifteenth and then move there.
Uh, and once again, I just wanna be fair and I think we're better off doing it, you know, because it wouldn't be until the following winter.
Right.
You know, in a December or a January meeting, when a lot of these people are up here if they want to come, because we believe in public.
Right, and I think that the idea that was brought up at one of the previous meetings about actually starting the registration process in April, it gives plenty of time for that, everybody to get what they need to get.
Right.
I mean, I think if we start in the April timeframe and then they have from then till next winter to get it together, I think that's, that's reasonable.
So somewhere in January that we have it and we post it, that there's going to be a, um, a discussion, so if anyone wants to come, they can come.
The only concern I have, I mean, I, I, I like the, the informational part of it, but we gotta put it in the book by the third week of January, if we're gonna have it in as a budget line item, so that's the, the only, the only thing is the timing, so if it could be more in December, it would be helpful, like anything like that would be helpful.
December, there's a lot more people up here. I just don't wanna do it like in September or October.
No, that's fine. I just, I, my only concern is, is my goal this year is to not have the panic that's gone on for many years. We didn't have much of one last year, but I wanna even improve a little bit and try to be done the budget in December. And then, uh, in January, we're just actually waiting for the, the information from the schools and, and then, you know, dotting the i's and crossing the t's. And then we have, and we would have the book pre-prepared, so we're ready to go.
And then I'm gonna switch back to listing on page two. So if we can just find out, reading all the news in the town of Killington, from letters, from different, um, real estate agencies of, um, properties increasing, and I believe our coefficient number is going in the wrong direction.
Yes.
And we're probably looking at some point where the state might come back and say, you need to do another town reappraisal.
Yeah, we're, we were, we were pointing, three, we were only three percent off of needing a reappraisal last year.
Okay, and when I look at our restricted funds, fund number one thirteen.
Yeah.
State reappraisal grants.
Yeah.
We have a total of two-hundred-and-fifty-two thousand in there and change. I'd like to know what the last one cost us. At another, at another meeting, just give us an update, so we know what we're in for.
Yeah.
That might be enough to cover it. It might not. I don't know.
Okay.
Good with everything else. So you guys wanna talk about BCA salaries or stipends for select board members?
I didn't know we got paid for that. Do we need to, um, motion the individual sections?
No.
This is just, this is just a review.
This is just upfront, right.
Typically, what we try to do is, last year, what we did is we picked, if there was a couple of line items, we say, okay, let's highlight that and we'll look at that one when we get the rest of the information and-
Okay.
Um, but just for, just for an overview, um, I've also included the, the budget report summary. Um, and this is for the total budget that, that it's put together at this point. And I just wanted to let you know, as it stands right now, the operations budget, uh, is an increase of about sixty-eight thousand dollars, twenty thousand of which uh, represents the, the hiring of the combination, uh, after-school person and, and rec director, which will be reimbursed, so there's a, so technically, from apples to apples, there's about a forty-nine, fifty-thousand-dollar increase, which is one-point-seven or eight percent.
On a two-point-seven million dollar.
Right. So it's, we're, we're, we started off, I think the budgets have come in fairly reasonable, you know, we're gonna, there'll probably be some adjusting and cleaning. you know, we're going to, there'll probably be some adjusting and cleaning. We've done, like, uh, our, our benefits line item for health insurance is down $20,000 because we had two people that came in who are singles versus married people, so the rates came down a little bit, so right now, things look pretty good.
So we're not approving anything here, this is just giving us and then we're just information.
Technically, I wouldn't expect a vote to approve the operations portion of the budget till maybe the first meeting in December.
Mm-hmm.
You know, the goal is, is I want to go through all these items, see if there's anything we want to drill down on.
Right.
Um, clean up, and we're going to continually be getting, like, we're going to get new MVP numbers, you know, we usually get them in November, um, we're going to get, uh, the, the estimated school rate not till January, we're going to get, you know, there's a lot of things, and the, and the regular insurance rates are a liability, you know, if they have a 2% increase, you know, we might be off a little bit, so all those things will have to get tightened up before we finally approve anything. But right now, we're looking at the things that we control, meaning who we have hired and how many and how much do we want to spend on these items.
Okay. Are we posting this on the website?
It's already on there, well, it's on, if you, if you go to the, uh, the plant, the...
Town website.
If you go to the town website and you click on the select board and you go to meeting handouts, you click on meeting handouts and you'll, you'll be in the, the drop box and then you click on today's date and every document that you were handed is on there.
Can we get somebody to put up just one for the, um, FYI, what, FIE, FY 2021 budget, so they don't have to do all those other clicks?
We got a.
Which one?
Would, you want the one, the one we just reviewed?
Anything we're doing on budget, as, as we're doing this budget, that we just put it into where there's a, a line item, there's an item that says budget.
Right.
Proposed budget.
Proposed budget, and we'll put that item.
Where do you want it?
Right on the main part?
Main part.
On the front page?
Yeah, on the front page, if anybody wants to go in, they could look at it. Instead of going through a whole bunch of finding it.
That's all I have on the finance, on the budget part.
Okay.
And we, on the 21st, on the first, we'll be doing another, another group.
Employee handbook, personal policy approval.
Yeah, the employee handbook.
I'll make a motion to approve and then we can discuss.
The employee handbook, the portion at the front with the table of contents, which is the one we've reviewed already, nothing has changed in there from what we were talking about, most of the, all of the changes that were requested at the last meeting were made in the employment benefits section. Um, and the changes that were made was the fiscal year 2020 is added to the title, so that, you know, every year we have to update it in case there's any modifications.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we have, when we talk about the voluntary insurance, um, the stipend is not going to be available to people hired after January 1, 2020. Um, we are no longer mentioning anything about the social security, that's law and it just works how it works, we're just dealing with our part of the retirement system.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I did add three little headlines of things that, two things that we've already been doing and weren't identified, and one that I just found out about that they've approved. Um, first is, the, the town employees have the golf privileges, there was always a policy at the golf course as to what that meant. Um, and I, what I wanted to do is just take what they had at the golf, at the, at the golf course for the town and put it into the employee handbook, so everybody understands it and it's clear. Um, secondly.
Golf privileges.
Golf privileges.
No, I would say it's spelled privilege.
It's probably spelled wrong, privlied.
Oh, I get it, okay. Nice going. Got to get somebody who can spell. Um, the other item was, we, is something that was approved by the select board a few years ago, um, but we had situations where employees were unable to go to their local transfer stations, um, so it was said that, uh, an employee of the town of Killington can buy a town of Killington transfer station sticker and buy the pass, they're still paying for all of their trash, um, but typically we, for anybody else, we don't allow out-of-town people to buy stickers and do that, so we do allow employees to use the transfer station.
Mm-hmm.
And the final item was, uh, we are a member of the KPAA and have been for years, um, the resort and the KPAA have acknowledged that the town employees would then qualify for the merchant's pass. Um, so those, any employee who wants to ski can go buy the merchant's pass and do the volunteer work that they need to do.
What do we pay the KPA for our membership, if we do?
Right now, we are paying in kind with plowing.
Okay. And then, I don't know what's wrong with any of that. Um, where is the definition of what an employee is?
That's in the, that's in the handbook portion, the, this one. Other persons covered. It's anybody who works over 30 hours per week per the rules of the feds.
So it's, it's not elected, it's not appointed positions.
Right.
And it's not part-time in the town.
Correct.
Okay.
Now, the, the, there is a, a form that you, we can say where if somebody wants to adhere to all these policies in this program, they can, but this is for employees only that are working more than 30 hours and are considered full-time.
Right, I just want to make sure that that's clear, that's.
Yep.
I've gone to the golf course a couple of times and they've offered me a 50% for food. I'm like, I'm not an employee, I'm an elected official.
And, and what we'll have to do is clarify that with them and give them a list of the people who are the 30 hours and over.
Right. And the KPAA, the same?
The same thing, because they're actually going to want a list, because we are going to be operating slightly differently than most of the businesses, because in most businesses, the business has to write the check, um, that's not possible for us, so we have to give a list to the resort and they said the, the employee can pay them direct.
Okay.
So we will not have to go through that process.
And we're going to make sure that the employees understand the, um, obligation that they're signing on for.
Yes.
That if they don't do the eight hours of service or whatever.
They owe the rest of the money.
Right.
Yeah, and that'll be, they'll, they'll have to sign all of that and we will make everybody aware.
The town is not liable, that's why.
That's correct.
The town is not liable for that.
That's correct.
Okay. Um. I have a motion on the table, I have a motion on the table to approve.
Okay. Anything further? All those in favor of accepting the employee handbook personnel policy, please say.
One change of privileges?
Well, the, the typo.
I'll fix the typo.
With the typo fixed, please say aye.
Aye.
And you can, only to sign one of those.
While we're, we're signing it, it's just, so.
Sign this one, because it's not, it's not stapled.
Well, while we're signing this and we have a few minutes here, just to make sure it's clear, because if anybody's in the audience or watching or next year, this is for town employees and the golf course, they're brown employees.
That's correct.
So, and the golf course may give part-time employees there whatever they do.
Actually, they're.
It's not, it's not our rules.
No, it's not, and I can, I can clarify that for you.
All I'm saying is, is that if, if, if somebody here is a part-time person getting golf privileges, they're not a town of Killington's employee, that is the management company and that's their ruling.
Yeah, they, they have a separate policy, when you look at the, the golf privileges for employees, the town one was different than the one for employees.
You're signing this one, are you waiting?
They had slightly more privileges than we did.
Okay, and then, just to, to, to come back up on that chat, as far as the KPAA, um, is the golf course also a member of the KPAA?
Not at this time. Well, they, they always have been as part, because they're part of the town, but they're not a separate member, which is something.
Well, what I'm saying is, is that.
Brown employees do not qualify.
They don't, they don't follow our full-time rules.
Right.
Are they coming over to us to get the season pass?
No, they can't do, they cannot do the pass, the brown employees cannot do the pass with the, the KPAA, no.
Okay, right. Because they're not paying for a membership and if they are going to do that at some point, they have to put it in the budget that they're going to be, become a member.
It says all course employees, it doesn't distinguish among, um, I got this sideways.
KPAA.
All course employees are, get complimentary golf, includes a cart, that's the difference with the towns, the town employees don't get a cart.
I'm talking about the KPAA side.
Right, but they are not part of the KPAA.
Okay.
And do not qualify for the merchant's pass.
Okay. Unless they come forward with a budget that shows that they're going to become one and we approve it.
Right, correct.
Conflict of interest policy?
That, the only change to the conflict of interest policy was adding the elected slash appointed.
Okay.
What's that?
Well, two of us voted anyway.
Yeah.
Good to go. That's all we needed, but still.
Go ahead. Keep going.
What did I miss?
No, Jim said we didn't vote and I said, well, Chuck and I voted.
I was talking when they voted.
We had to vote.
Okay. Um, on the, on the conflict of interest policy, the only change was to add, when we put slash appointed, so elected and appointed officials, that was the change requested at the last meeting, so other than that, it's all the same.
Mm-hmm.
And I think we're good to go.
Okay.
Motion to approve the conflict of interest and ethical conduct.
Okay, all those in favor of accepting the conflict of interest policy, please say aye.
Aye.
I do understand where the one hour went, what that is.
I just wanted you to be aware.
Okay, we're still with you. I was going to say it's over to you, but you've done everything else so far.
Let's, what's next? Um, oh.
It's the manager's report.
Um, town, I need a, I need a motion from the select board, and I think you guys have to sign this, let me see if I can put my hands on it.
Need a motion to accept the town road and bridge standards?
Yeah, the state town and road and bridge standards, that we, that we accept them and you guys have to sign, um, that we agree, um, we've been, this is nothing new, we've done it every year.
Says how many miles we have and what classes they are.
Well, it's also, it's also, we have at least, we meet the minimum standards for our ditches, our roads, the culvert sizes, we're actually, their, their requirement is 15-inch, we use 18.
It's construction standards and.
It's stormwater, it's all of those pieces, and we're, we're far exceeding, um, the state requirements at this point.
Do you want to make that motion to accept this? All in favor of accepting the town road and bridge standards, please say aye.
Aye. Tax sale update I gave earlier, we're doing that on October 8th. Um, public safety building update, uh, you will notice tonight in your, in your warrants, because we have quite a bit of money in the warrants, the paving project is in there and, um, one of the other things is a $35,000 check to the Division of Fire Safety, which is our building permit application.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so we will be filing that after tomorrow, um, and we expect by noon tomorrow, we will have the final, 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 final state permit and we will start digging.
Mm-hmm.
So the last of the stormwater permits will be in tomorrow and we will be actually full steam ahead. Um, we've already had conversations with the Division of Fire Safety related to, um, getting an accelerated permit for just the foundation, so that we don't get held up at all with weather, so they are in, in agreement with that conceptually. So unless they find something that's an issue, we'll be, we should be able to really make some time now.
What do we expect to have done before the snow flies?
We expect to have, uh, the structural steel up, depending on how early snow flies, I mean, we will, they'll have a building.
I don't mean like the fir, you know, what, where do we expect to get this?
When the real snow, when the real snows happen, like, I, I consider that like mid-December when the snow stays permanently, I would expect we'd have structural steel up, which we'd have roof deck up, and it'll still be open on the sides, but we should be finishing, getting the framing going, the wood framing part of it, and then getting it enclosed, you know, like maybe a month, month and a half later. So we'll be, we'll be into the January timeframe before we're closed.
But they're going to continue to work through the winter.
Yeah, we, we have money in there for, for winter conditions and, you know, we did the evaluation to determine whether winter conditions was more or less expensive than delaying the, the project, like getting the structural steel in and stopping for three months and the cost increase would outweigh what the winter conditions are, so we're just going to keep going.
Town's going to have a deal with China, the tariffs are going to go away.
And then maybe we'll stop.
Right after we put the steel up.
Yeah, right, that's what, yeah, typically.
I just, you know, I mean, just an update when we get through these things, because people are going to be, you know, what's going on there, what's going on there, why are you working in the wintertime?
Yeah.
What you just said is a perfect, um, reason why we're doing it.
Right.
As the cost of prices go up, they tell us like 5% to 7% every single year that we don't do something.
Right. So it's just, it's going to be cheaper to keep going.
Right.
And, and the state permits are why we're this late starting.
Yeah.
By far, so. And we did, we, you know, we got the vote in March, the end of April, those drawings were done and the first group were submitted, and we're just, we just got that permit last Wednesday. That was like the first of May when we made that application, so.
Is this all on you to make sure the budget stays within parameters?
Yes.
We're under.
It's all of us.
I mean, it's everybody, but it, it, it. The issue is, we, we've hired a construction manager, they have a fixed fee, their job is to keep everybody in line, and, you know, I was having the conversation out on site with the contractor today and he said, I said, you know, we don't have a lot of contingency left, and I said, no one's allowed to make a change, discussion's over, we've spent a year of making sure we, we covered all the issues, so we are where we are, now it's unexpected if we have to have any changes, so.
Listers updates?
Listers correction, I just had that in my hand, and what I do with it, there it is. Did I put it over there? Um, this is for Huntington Technologies, the account assessed a value at $11,400 was incorrect, the correct assessed value should be $8,646, and this is a difference of $2,300. Um, the change will be entered on 9/18 on the 4/11 to, to fix it, um, so that's a difference of about $235 to the grand list.
So.
$23.
$23.
$23.
Uh, is the company coming to us and bringing this up, or are the listers just?
That one, I don't know what, how it originated, I can't answer that question.
Well, I'm not going to sign something or approve something that, no, let me finish, okay, because, because everyone is given a tax bill.
This is personal property.
Personal property.
Yeah, this isn't the regular property tax.
Okay, well, everybody is given something.
Yes.
Okay, and you get to grieve it, you could grieve personal property tax.
Right.
So there's a, there's a, there's a procedure to do it.
Right, and in most of these cases, it's that they had come to an agreement before and forgot to make the change in the, the thing, but I can get you more information if you wanted me to wait for that.
For $23, I'll sign it, but in the future.
Yeah.
I want to know if it's, you know, I mean, if it's just them going through their books and saying they made a mistake, if, if it was billed out at $11,000 and it's up to the person that has the property to come in and say, no, that's wrong.
Right.
It's not, it's not for us to go through our books afterwards.
That's correct.
You know, it's, because if somebody comes in with a, an $800,000 property and says, you made a mistake and it's supposed to be $600,000 because of, they say, well, we gave you a notice and that was what it raised and you missed the deadline.
Right.
Come back next year. So, I'll make a motion to approve it, but in the future, I'd just like to, you know, know who initiated it.
Do we have a department update?
Just briefly, highway-wise, we have completed the Dean Hill Road and East Mountain Road projects. We are, like I said, waiting for the, just the final few bills. We're still, we're still waiting for the company to come do the line striping. They should be here shortly, Thursday. The company that's going to do the crosswalks and stop bars will be here. So we'll get at least that part done and we just got to get the lines on the roads completed.
What about the, the ditches on the sides? Are those all set? No?
The ditches are done. I think there's a section on Dean Hill Road that's not quite done. We had to stop when they paved and we don't want to mess the paving up yet. So we have one little, like a couple hundred-foot section we have to finish. The crew was working at the Route 4 intersection today. We had cleaned those ditches out and there was a bunch of ledge we had to take out. We hammered them. We went today to re-clean the ditch and take all the ledge that we hammered out of it out. And then we're going to be stone lining those and those should be done in the next couple of days. And then we have a couple culverts to replace and some miscellany.
They're way up the hill.
Yeah. And the grading starts next week, I think. The re-grading of the, all the roads. And then from, we saw the tent outside, the Fairy Tale Festival is on this coming weekend. So hopefully that'll go well as it has in the past. The rec director position, Sarah has done an outstanding job getting started. Right now, everything looks good and I think we're, we're in good hands. I think she's going to be a great addition to the town. And, and I hear all the same stuff from people at the school. So I think everything's going really well. And, oh, and, and the big announcement of all of them at the, at a, what was it last week? What was the function?
Vermont Municipal Clarkson.
Yeah, Vermont Municipal Clarkson Treasurers had a, an event at Lake Maury last week and our town clerk, Lucretia Wanzar, was named clerk of the year in the state of Vermont. So congratulations to, to Lucretia. I'd entertain a motion to get her a tiara if we could do that. But I'm sorry.
I think I have one of those.
That's, that's all we need. But, and, and that's all I have for departments today. There actually is no Board of Liquor Control today.
Other business.
Other business.
So I saw Kurt was here, I don't know, last meeting or the meeting before that.
No, it was August 20th.
Okay, well, maybe that was.
And then I literally left the state for a while.
Oh, so it was two meetings ago or whatever. And then there was an email about something with the sewer up on the road. Did that have anything to do with?
According, I was just asking. The, the, the treated, the treated material that comes from the sewer plant was in a forced main right near your property. And supposedly, that's been leaking for a very long time. It has now been repaired. We don't know how much volume that would have meant, but it was right in your location where it was, where it was seeping out of the bank. So.
Your fish were okay. No, it's, 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 it said it, it said it in the reports.
In the report that the fish were fine. So, yeah, it was, but it has been repaired. It took them a while to find the location, but it was coming out right adjacent to where you are.
Uphill from, you know, the A-frame.
Yeah.
Kevin Flynn's place.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, it's up in that area, yeah. I don't know the exact spot, because they did it by camera.
That's where they had the camera.
They had to put in the camera and then they had to sleeve it.
Water from the well behind Kevin's. They, they boil it, they, you know, wash in it, et cetera, but.
I'm more, yeah, that part, but what I'm getting at is that.
Volume of water.
Was, how much volume of water may be contributed in, to that area.
Right.
Now that they've found this leak and they've repaired it, you may see, and just keep an eye. I mean, hopefully we see some kind of.
Reduction.
Reduction in water. I mean, you know, if you have a water main or whatever main, unloading into your neighborhood.
All right.
And we fix it, which it wasn't ours.
No.
Right.
Turbin district one.
But it may lower down some of the water that was accumulating in that area, making things wet.
Any other business?
Many executive sessions?
I have a couple of things to go over under contracts.
Motion to go into executive session at 7:45?
Aye.
Aye.